Good evening and welcome to our Cobb County Board of Commissioners Special Called Meeting this July 16, 2025. We are here today for two hearings. Today we'll have our first hearing as the second public hearing on the 2025 proposed property tax increase as defined by Georgia law. Our second hearing today will be to conduct the second public hearing on the FY '26 or fiscal year '26 proposed budget. For our first hearing, we will hear from our deputy finance director and he will walk us through the presentation.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners, County Manager. As you said, we're going to have our second public hearing tonight on the millage rate. I want to go over the dates. It was advertised on June 26, 2025 in the MDJ. We had our first public hearing on July 8. Today is our second public hearing and then we have our third and final on July 22, which is next week at 7:00 PM. We also have our adoption that day of both the millage and the budget. These are the four millage rates that the county is responsible for. We have the general fund, the fire district fund, the Cumberland Special Service District Fund 2, which is the special service district in the Cumberland area that is designed to help pay a portion of the Braves debt service. And then we have the Six Flags Special Service District, which we no longer collect taxes for due to the creation of the city of Mableton. As you'll see, we recommend keeping the general fund millage rate flat at 8.46 mils. There's a slight reduction proposed in the fire fund from 2.99 mils to 2.97. And to give some context to that, that is about $500,000 for .01 of a mil. So by going to .02 reduction, you're looking at about $1 million of reduction in the fire fund, which is sustainable in both the '25 budget and the '26 proposed budget. We recommend keeping the Cumberland Special Service District flat at 2.45 mils. And as I stated earlier, we're no longer collecting for the Six Flags Special Service District, so we recommend zero mils there. The bottom is a graphical representation of the net digest. As you can see, it has grown over the past few years, but that growth has slowed in 2025. So here's a more detailed breakout of the digest. The bottom two or bottom three rows is where I want you to focus. We have our gross digest. You can see the change there. That's 2.9%. After exemptions were taken, we had our net taxable digest growth of 3.39% in 2025. I'm going to take a moment here to talk about what that looks like on a bill for a primary homesteaded property owner within Cobb County. If you're under the age of 62 and it's your primary residence, you do pay the school board tax. That does not have a floating homestead exemption. That is represented by the yellow line. You'll see the fire fund, which is represented by the red line. That also does not have the float. The two things about those is they move in proportion to the net taxable value of the home. So as the fair market goes up, the taxable value goes up, they do not have the float. So the primary resident would be paying a higher school board tax and fire fund tax as a result of that growth in their home value. I want you to see the blue line. That is a result of the homestead exemption. So if the millage rate for the general fund remains consistent at 8.46 mils, if your home's value goes from, in this example, roughly $200 and something thousand dollars to north or close to 400, your bill for the general fund, which is your police, libraries, parks, remains essentially the same as long as the millage rate itself is not touched for that primary homestead exemption, primary homestead owner, I'm sorry. That results, in this example, to a savings of about almost $1,500 that that person would have paid without the float on their general fund millage rate. So it was very brief, but with that, I'll conclude the presentation and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Similar to our other proceedings, what I'll do is I'll open it up for the citizens for their ability to weigh in during the hearing and then I'll see if any commissioners have any comments or questions. And I'll do my best to have any of the points of the citizens to be responded to if needed.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. The public hearing is open up to anyone who desires to address the matter of the property tax increase associated with keeping the millage rate flat. It is constrained or the comments are constrained to that matter and that matter only. And you are welcome to speak up to three minutes and we'll have an unlimited number of speakers. And we'll begin with our first speaker. For those of you who are new to this process, please note to state your name before you provide any of your comments. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jan Barton. We are here tonight to ask you to roll back the millage rate and not raise our taxes yet again. Increasing, I'm going to include the budget in here because they are interchangeable in a way. Increasing the budget and our taxes 9% year after year is irresponsible. Change your processes, require every county department to plan ahead, and there are things on the budget that we can address later, but if you, it seems that the process has become, you look at what you can attain through assessments, increased housing assessments, and then you build your budget around it. That's not the way it's supposed to work. And in fact, before the '90s, the home assessment thing was totally different. Our homes were based on what we paid for when we bought our home. Right now, the way you do it, it's a threat to every homeowner because some people are taxed out of their houses. They can't plan for it. So basically, and this is a national issue, the home assessment tax process is a scam that needs to change. And we ask our legislators to change that scam. And again, please roll back the millage, change the process, stick to the basics of county government, do not raise our taxes yet again, lower the millage, and change the current scam. Thank you.
We will take our next speaker.
My name is Betty Hayden. I'm a homeowner in Cobb County since 1998. In every budget, whether household or county, there are always competing issues, things we want and things we really need. Those are the two opposing sides of a budget, wants versus needs. Taxes are really our money at work for us. So I say to the Cobb residents and the board, be informed and not influenced, and speak out for projects we really need in Cobb County. Cobb County gave $108,000 to a charity. We don't know what that was. How many potholes in our streets can you fix with $108,000? We are spending $25 million above budget to construct a new sheriff facility. That's not remodeling, but building a new one. We spend $200,000 to $300,000 or more for consulting fees on each project, not the repairs, but just outside consultant fees. Is there no one in our government staff locally who can consult the board as part of their salary rather than bring in out-of-the-area consultants who don't even know Cobb County? Our stormwater infrastructure was designed to last 30 years. That infrastructure is 30 years old and at the end of its structural life. Now, that would be a better priority than constructing tiny homes in Cobb County. How about our power grid for Cobb County? 99% of the power produced now will be used for AI. We must increase our generator capacity. Let's plan ahead on that issue before our grid is overloaded or goes down. In a general sense, we need better accountability to the public specifying how our money is spent for each line item in the budget. The budget we review is not detailed with itemization within each category. But what we do know is the general fund will increase by $18 million, reaching $643 million, while the total operating budget will rise by $49 million totaling $1.325 billion. In just two budget cycles, our budget has increased by 20%. Our incomes as taxpayers have not increased by 20%, but that doesn't seem to matter to local officials. This budget growth is unprecedented and will put financial strain on many Cobb residents. We are here to declare to the commissioners concerning this overspending, not this time. Meet the needs of the peoples, not the wants of the wealthy. Meet the real needs of Cobb residents that you were elected to serve. Thank you.
Our next speaker can please approach.
My name's Karen Hobson. I am a homeowner in Cobb County. I didn't prepare anything. I'm just speaking ad lib. So since 2005, we've been a homeowner. I am currently now a single mother, two kids. So today I was on the phone all day with the mortgage company because they raised my mortgage $450 a month for the next year based on my taxes went from $2,000 to almost $4,200. And that spread out over the 12 months is going to put me in a tight spot. And I'm already trying to save for retirement, trying to, you know, my kids are still back at home, although they're in their early twenties. It's just tough and I don't eat out. I take my lunch every day to work. The raise I get is like a dollar fifty a year if I meet all the metrics at my job at Kennison. So this is tough. This was a shock today to see this. And I honestly, my taxes have been like 1,600, 1,800, and now 4,200. That's shocking. And all my neighbors are similar. Some can absorb that, a lot of us can't. And, you know, we do the best we can. So I really don't want this, I want the taxes rolled back. I don't, I don't really like to see the, all these new programs. And we're all just trying to get by. It's been a tough few years with COVID and everything else. And this is just one other thing, not to mention like the regular utilities. Those have gone up for me like $350 a month. So that, here we are, almost $800 a month extra that I'm being asked to pay just to live, just to get by. I have a middle and middle America home. It's, I stayed there, I've made it look better than when I first moved in, but, you know, it's, it's not a mansion by any means. So I really wish we would roll back the taxes and not, definitely not increase the millage rate, but decrease it. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes. Please, we'll take our next speaker. As you see one speaker leaving, you can feel free to approach.
Hello, Chair and Commissioners. Every year we play this little charade of like, hey.
Please state your name again.
Christine Rozman, R-O-Z-M-A-N.
Thank you.
We play this charade of like groveling, saying, please don't raise our taxes. And the rest of us budgeting, but it seems like the commissioners and the, are not. Not all commissioners, but I don't, government, especially local government, is supposed to be, what, safety, public safety, infrastructure, and the roads. And that's really the core of what should be addressed. And we have all these ancillary things that we keep paying for that we don't need to be paying for. We need to roll back that millage rate. There's something that people are learning about and that's, they're getting aware that there's something called DOGE, and that would be the Department of Government Efficiency. And it ain't looking real efficient when we are being taxed out the eyeballs. And Karen, when she spoke as a single mom, she's just one of them. She's just one person. How about the rest of the people that this is affecting? I've seen our tax dollars, I've attended your event, Chairwoman Cupid, where there's a carving station and what was it, prime rib or something? And I'm like, our tax dollars are going for this for some swanky event? So why don't you like think about spending within your means and staying focused on what you're actually supposed to be focused on? Like public safety, like our roads. Our roads are pathetic. Again, consulting fees going on like crazy. And I think there's going to be like a big awakening at some point because it's happening in federal government where it's starting to find the squeeze and people are realizing, we're paying for what? And it's not, better rein it in. Rein it in. Thank you.
We'll take our next speaker.
I'm Ken. I've been living in Cobb County since 2000. I've been attending many of these meetings, these Board of Commissioner meetings, for many years. And I listen to speakers explain the difficulties associated with increased taxes in this And yet, I have this feeling that, I'll just address it as the board without talking about anybody in particular, don't seem to listen, don't seem to address the specific concerns expressed by the people who have just spoken and many, many others in the past. It's as if we're given a chance to speak and there's not a response to each of the questions, the major issues that are being expressed by all of these speakers. And I have this feeling for years and years, not just today. Will there be a response to most of the issues expressed by the speakers today? Budgeting is a significant issue for you and for us. But in all the years that I've been coming to these meetings and seeing the cost go up to the citizens as a consequence of increased taxes approved by our Board of Commissioners, there does not seem to be a recognition of the problems being experienced by the citizens of the county. I think it's in the best interest of all of us to address these issues directly so that the citizens believe that the board is aware and that the board is making decisions on the basis of concerns for the, on the basis of concerns expressed by the citizens, not independent of the concerns expressed by the citizens. And so I ask that you perhaps make that, make us more aware of, to what, to what degree are you considering these concerns? Thank you.
Do we have any more speakers? Okay, not seeing anyone else, we'll go ahead and close this hearing. I will ask each commissioner if they have any comments or questions with respect to the millage or the present, excuse me, the responses to the millage or to the presentation that was provided by our deputy finance director. Begin with you, Commissioner Gamble.
I guess the only comment that I have as of right now is for the public purpose and for transparency, what is the agenda item going to say next week for the millage rate for the fire fund? I mean, I know we didn't have any comments directly from our speakers tonight in that regards, but I think to be fair to our finance department, we need to, as a board, collectively decide what they should put on the agenda so that way the public knows prior to next Tuesday.
Okay. Would you like to respond? Has there been any change to the fire millage that has been proposed?
Not at this point, ma'am, but we await any other direction from the board.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else, Commissioner? Okay. Commissioner Allen? Okay. Commissioner Burrow?
So from the presentation at our morning meeting, July 8, this is still the same proposal and numbers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then you've talked to each of us and have our, where we stand with regard to all the issues or, and the fire fund?
Yes, ma'am. Either myself or Mr. Volkmann has.
So I guess you'll know from that, speaking to each of us individually, where we are and what we.
I think at that point, that's, it's why we're having the proposed millage rate where it is today with the .02 mil reduction. And again, if this board comes to any other consensus decision, we're happy to make the change.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And thanks to you and Bill for.
Thank you all.
Walking us through everything and working, meeting with us as well. Thank you.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Before you leave, I do want to respond and just thank you also, similar to Commissioner Burrow, and thank the citizens for coming and speaking today. I do do my best to make as many notes as possible to reflect the concerns shared by citizens. Some of them I will do my best to address this evening. And that, where I fall short, I do want to share that there will be an online virtual town hall so that we can better field questions, as was stated by Mr. Emkin. One thing that I dislike is that these are one-sided communications, the way that our public hearings are constructed. So presentation, you speak, we speak, but there really isn't a dialogue, which makes one of an austere interaction. And I do know that the concerns of citizens are very real and should be given proper due, which is why I asked for that meeting. And given the interest of time and just how limited it is for people to make it to some of our town halls, it's online to try to maximize participation. And we're hoping that we can have more of a conversation as people ask questions to more readily respond. So there just doesn't seem to be, again, this type of interaction, which is, can come across cold and austere that we are not considering each remark or each concern or each speaker as they're coming before us. I just want to talk a little bit about the, we're talking about the property tax increase. Our next hearing is with respect to the budget. So a lot of remarks were with respect to the budget. So I don't want to necessarily go down that path. So forgive me, I'm going to take some time to see if I see anything specific to our millage. They are intertwined, but I think it'd be more appropriate to address some of these remarks during the second hearing that we'll have this evening. There is one question around budget and looking at our millage. Can you talk a little bit about, I guess there's an issue of the tail wagging the dog? Do we look at what we're receiving and just try to keep that millage rate the same and then just add things in? What is the strategy around the setting of the millage rate?
Sure. And I know it can get a little convoluted, but this is the 2025 millage rate. So this relates to the 2025 budget, which was approved by the board last year. So in effect, we're approving a millage rate that the board built a budget to almost 365 days ago. So I just want to remind everyone of that. So the next presentation is of the '26 budget. And certainly, the millage rate does form the foundation of that budget. But again, we'll be here next year voting on the 2026 millage rate, which funds the budget that you're about to hear in this next presentation. So it's not necessarily tail wagging the dog. It is, this hearing right now is to address a budget that's already passed and we're already three quarters of the way due, or through, I should say. Tax bills are due in the fall. So the way it goes is we receive most of our revenue in the fall, which actually goes to pay for services already provided and rendered.
How are we able to do that? That seems retroactive. And persons coming here today may perceive that we are setting this millage based on expenses to come.
Sure. What this does is the way we build our budget is we take into account some growth. So when we're building our 2025 budget, we projected a 3% growth in this digest. We actually got 3.39%. So that's really close to where, you know, we actually ended up. In other years, we've taken a more conservative approach, but we've had incredible increases in our digest. We've had 8%, we've had 9%. This year, this '25 budget is actually pretty much where we anticipated it would be. So it really doesn't leave much room for flexibility with respect to where we are because these are bills that have already come due. If we were having another year of 10%, 12% digest growth and we projected 3, we could be having a different conversation. But this is one of the, one of the things about the way we budget is we're, we're already paying for it. We've projected 3 and we're 3.39% today.
Okay. With that being stated, what would be the impact of not having a millage rate that meets the expenses or the budget of the prior year?
Well, in essence, you would, if you didn't approve a millage rate where we had already budgeted, you could, in theory, if it was just A plus B equals C, you would end up with a net loss. And that's, would obviously lead to another problem next year when looking at the budget. So if we were to take any action to reduce that, we would have to go back and revisit the '26 budget because that's the foundation for the next year's budget. And we'd also have to look at what that would and how it would impact our current financials. And again, we're coming in about where we thought we would be.
Yes. Thank you for sharing that. And that may be part of the reason why it may appear as if we are not being responsive to some concerns when we set the millage. I have been on the board where we have. I have been on the Board where we have cut the millage and cut the millage, and then when expenses came due, we came back the next year and we had to increase the millage much more than we would have if we just kept the millage rate the same. At some point, the bill becomes due, and we either take account for it on an annual basis, or we put it off until later, which makes those expenses more, which is something that we can all relate to and how we may personally cover things that need to be paid for. The more we wait to pay for it, there sometimes becomes an increasing cost to cover that bill. And again, Commissioner Burrell was here when I was here, and we cut the millage rate one year. We came back, we increased it, I believe, in one year, two mills to account for lowering the millage. So it's not necessarily commensurate that what you lower it to is what you're going to have to raise it to because you're getting further behind. And so, again, it's not that we don't hear you, and as our Deputy CFO or Finance Director shared, they are conservative in how we budget and conservative in how we're setting our millage, where they're very close in looking at what we expect it to expend and what we actually are expecting to receive. We'll be able to talk a little bit more of what this looks like in our budget during the next hearing, so it may make a little bit more sense as we're talking through this process. But that's the reason, it was a very painful process for everyone, not just the Board, the community, when we had to come back and raise that millage rate. And it, two mills, and it was put on a new leader, a new chair, had to come in and do the things that the Board prior did not do. And so what we end up doing is just putting this on someone else. And there's never really a time where the public just has plenty of money to pay for property taxes. So we don't expect the public to have a windfall and say, okay, we'll lower it now because we expect them to have more a few years from now. So we can just try to be conservative and keep things steady, which is why you'll see us keep that millage rate flat. And there are some things that we forego as a county because we may have expenses that could rise beyond what receipts we may receive through the millage, but, and there's some times we will receive more, but those times that I've been here have been far few between from all the times where we've had to look at how we don't respond to the needs of the organization because we're just trying to modestly keep this millage rate flat and work within that. So that, I think, lends itself to us looking as if we are not responding. We hear you. We do not want you to experience more pain than necessary, which is why I think it's very important that we have a conservative approach and that we're very mindful of what things we are willing to forego every budget cycle because we're trying to keep that millage rate flat. Forgive me, I'm going to probably take some pauses as I go through my notes and see if there's anything else here with respect to the millage.
Ma'am, and while you do that, I just want to remind the public that they can see their tax bill, their current tax bill and prior year tax bills on the Tax Commissioner's website. And also, being a Cobb County homeowner, I had my mortgage rate increase as well, and part of it was actually my homeowner's insurance. So I also want to remind folks that that's also part of it, and I was a little surprised, but, just an aside.
You are not alone in that surprise.
Yeah.
There's been perhaps a thought or a comment shared, and it may not have been meant that we are increasing the millage. Again, we're keeping the millage rate flat. We are not increasing the millage. There has been a question or a desire for us to roll back the millage, and I think I just addressed just some of the considerations for doing that. I would like to go to one slide that you had.
Sure.
It's the slide that has the bar graph.
Yes, ma'am.
And I want you to walk through this again because there was a comment made about increased taxes that residents are paying, and every year they're just going up and up, and that there used to be a process that changed where persons paid their taxes based on the amount they brought their property at, which makes me think that they were thinking of the homestead. The homestead still applies today as it did.
Going back, I mean, with my tenure here in Cobb County government and being a homeowner in Cobb County, the homestead float has been around for longer than I've been a homeowner. It's certainly been in existence since I've bought my own home and worked here at Cobb. And again, that's kind of represented in the blue bar. Now, this is an actual home in Cobb County, and yes, it is shocking to see the growth in that home value. As you can see by the great bar, it was $200,000, but I don't think there's anyone in this room or on this Board that hasn't seen this in the homes throughout Cobb or the nation. So you have this type of growth, and without the benefit of that homestead exemption for the primary residents, again, this is just, if this homestead is your primary residence and you have the floating homestead exemption, you will have a property bill for the general fund, which is the main component that we're speaking of today, similar to the blue line. As long as the millage rate isn't adjusted, that blue line will remain constant regardless if the home goes up 7,000%. It will remain constant for the blue line. Whereas that similar homestead exemption does not apply to either the fire fund at the time when we had debt service. It didn't apply to the debt service fund, and nor does it apply to the school board. And again, the big school board exemption is that once you're 62, and I don't want to misquote that, but I think it falls off when you're 62, you can have the school board exemption. But again, the blue line represents the general fund, which is the largest millage rate here for Cobb County government at 8.46 mills. And again, if that's your home and it's gone from 200,000 to 400,000, or 500,000 to a million, or whatever multiplier that is, if that is your primary residence, wherever you bought that home at and, and applied for your homestead exemption, it's another thing, you have to make sure you apply for that. And usually that's done when you buy the home. That is locked in at whatever the value was the day you purchased that home. In this example, the homeowner's actually bought the home in the 80s. So I changed this example to show that, because their, their general property tax was only like a few hundred dollars, it wasn't even that much money because they had bought it so long ago. So this is to the same home, but it's as if you purchased the home in 2018 for example purposes.
Okay, so the Cobb County taxes for the general fund are remaining flat based on the time they got the homestead exemption.
Yes, ma'am.
For this family would be 2018 is what's depicted.
Yes, ma'am. And you can follow that on your bill as well. You can see, there's several columns. You'll see the taxable value, you'll see the assessed value, and you'll see the assessed, or the exemptions. And there's rows for each category that we're discussing here, whether it be the school, general fund, fire, debt service at the time. You'll see and can follow through the value and the exemptions that apply.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that because, again, this is one of the reasons too why we understand the concern, but we also know that with the homestead exemption, that we implore every resident to take, and anyone who's listening to this, if you don't have it, we ask for you to reach out and make sure that we get you to apply for it by April 1st, I believe, of every year, is because we want you to lock in that home value so that your property taxes that you're paying to the county's general fund are not escalating to the cost of your home. That even if the value of your home is increased, if the millage, you know, where the millage rate may remain the flat, yours may remain flat, yes, our property taxes are being reported as increasing, but what you're paying to the general fund should remain the same if you have the homestead exemption. With the fire fund, it's the red line. That money also comes to the county. There has been modest increase between 2018 and 2024. Back when we had the House Bill 581 discussion, we came to you, the public, and asked, would you like us to apply the homestead exemption to the fire fund so we can also keep that flat? It was implored to us by most residents to keep that as it is. So therefore, we do not have a flat fire fund. It is increasing commensurate to the increase of your home value. But when you look at this chart, where you do see the greatest increases, where there is no homestead exemption, and it really is no authority of the Board to control this line, and that is for the school fund. And sorry, my screen just went blank in front of me, so I'm going to try, okay, I got it back. That is where what is being paid is increasing the greatest, but again, if you're 62 and you apply for that senior exemption, similar to the homestead exemption for the general fund, your school fees should remain flat over the period of which you've applied for that senior tax exemption. So that is also encouraged. It is a benefit of living in Cobb County. So we understand paying, there are a lot of measures that are put in place to honor homeownership, to honor our seniors, who we know many of them are living, living on a fixed income. There have been leaders that have honored that in the way that the millage rate and the way that these other exemptions have been applied to the county that we are being mindful of. And this is why, again, we hear you. We all are feeling the pain. Us up here too, we live here, we are real people with, who also are seeing the cost of everything increase, but we also know the exemptions, the approach of the county is taking into account a conservative approach of how we set the millage here in the county. I don't have anything else to add. So thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will go ahead and we will go to our second public hearing. And the second public hearing is with respect to the fiscal year '26 budget. No, the fiscal year, when we say '26, it ends in '26, and that's probably important to note, that the millage that we discussed is looking at spending from the last year. The '26 budget is looking at what we will do next year, and we'll set next year's millage based off of what we are doing here today. A lot of the comments that were shared during the first hearing, I will do my best to address during the second hearing.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. This is our second public hearing on the '26 proposed budget. And we're going to walk through this. This presentation is the same as the last one that we gave on the morning meeting, but again, want to make sure we hit all these highlights and answer any questions that the Board may have. But during this presentation, we're going to talk about budget summary and highlights, list of impact items, budget recommendations, budget breakdown by fund, budget schedule, and then where to find additional budget information. Okay, so one of the things we want to do is just remind the Board, this is the second year of our biennial budget process. So we kicked that off in 2025. That is the big lift, where we work with the departments to gather requests, and we present those requests to the Board. We do adopt one year at a time, so the second year is a planning budget. But then what we do after we move into this year, we send those requests out, anything that was unfunded to the departments for review, they go through a thorough process working with their budget team and verify or modify those budget requests if needed. And then that is what we present to you at the work session in March. And then from that point on, we begin meeting with departments, Commissioners, and County Manager to kind of get you to the point where we are today, where we have a budget to propose before you. And I do want to stop and thank you all for each of your time during that process, because I know you give up a lot of time to meet with us and go through that and meet with the departments to answer questions, so I do appreciate that. With that being said, as I said, this is our second year of our biennial budget. Want to remind the Board, as we look at the 2026 proposed budget column, you'll see four positions being proposed there. There was two for fire and two for water. There were 290 positions requested, is what I presented in March, and those are a significant lift. So as we walk through these, we very much take into account the impact to millage, digest, and our residents as we make these decisions, working with each of the Board members. With that being said, a couple of years ago, we added a couple hundred, or over 100 positions, and part of that Board's direction is to fill vacant positions first. Working very closely with our County Manager, I do want to report back to you that we have filled 106 of those positions from April 1 of last year to April 1 of this year. And I'm going to show you the impact of those fills, but again, focusing on recruitment and retention has been a priority of the Board as we walk through this process. But just a quick summary highlight on this, the proposed budget is increasing 48 million. This is slightly different than the original presentation that we gave. The increase was 49 million, and that $1 million change is due to the reduction that is being proposed in the fire fund. Okay, so this is really the best way I can show the highlights of the budget. Now, there's a lot more detail behind this, and if you would like additional information, it is on the budget website, so we want to walk through that. So each of the Commissioners have received a budget binder. That is posted on the website as well. You also received a second budget binder as we've updated based on our meetings. That is also on the website. So we will have all of that available to the public as, as well as copies of the presentations. But budget highlights that we're working with today, we're talking about how do we get to $48 million? So the 48 million is countywide, it is not just general fund. As we go through this, 11.4 of that is due to our water fund increase, and that is simply to maintain the system that we have today. It is water purchases, chemicals, parts, electricity, and gas. That is $11.4 million of the increase to the water fund. And we already touched on this briefly, but we talked about the 106 positions we filled. Each year during the budget process, we take a roster update. That accounts for any change in vacancy, full-time positions, part-time positions, as well as benefit selection. So that is a $12.3 million increase, and that is not approving an additional position. That is simply paying for the positions that are already on the books today based on filling vacancies, as well as addressing increases in pension and healthcare, as we do that each and every year through benefit selection and working with our, our partners that provide our healthcare through Blue Cross Per Shield or Kaiser and so on. So we do work through them. One of the adds this year is we have a 2% pay scale adjustment slash COLA and a continuation of the step and grade and merit process. That is $8.6 million countywide. That is not all general fund, that is countywide. That does include the public safety officers who are on step and grade, as well as the non-public safety officers. So this is a countywide approach. And the reason we're looking at this, this came as a recommendation through HR. Every three to five years, we do a class and pay study, which comes at a significant cost. So this is a way to try to stay a little bit more current and take a little bit of bite out of that apple each year versus having that big bill every three to five years. I believe the last one that we did was north of $30 million, and we implemented something, something close to 20 million if my memory serves me correct. So this is a way to stay current with the market and help us continue to improve upon those vacancies and address any, any challenges, challenging areas. Now, we spent a lot of time talking about fire. So we are proposing a reduction of .02 mills, and as we talked about that, that is about $1 million. Fire is still increasing, so I want to be clear, fire is still increasing. We are also increasing their contingency beyond the funding request for positions operating in capital by an additional 4.1 million. That contingency is just north of 11 and a half million dollars even with the proposed reduction. So fire is doing very well. This is something the Board took action on in 2018, as well as the general fund to make conscious improvements to both the general and fire fund. And I can report as a part of this proposed reduction, we are doing that. So those improvements are taking shape and going really well. All right, moving on to the next one, our claims fund. This is where we account for any healthcare, dental claims, workers' comp, and other, other claims related items. This is increasing $5.9 million. Now, the reason that this is on here is any employee, whether you live in the general fund, fire fund, water fund, we pay into the claims fund, and then that is where the benefits are paid out of. So we know we have an increased cost in insurance, that has to be an increased cost of fund claims. In addition to that, we do buy insurance for property, as well as cyber and a few other things like that. Those also have annual increases, so that is what's driving these as we move forward. And then every couple of years, we have to update our indirect costs. So what that is, is those funds that live outside of the general fund utilize general fund services. And a part of our general accounting practices, they have to account for the cost to receive those services. I'm going to give you an example. Payroll lives in the general fund, it lives in finance. If you work in water, there's a cost to us processing your payment. Water has to account for that cost. And same thing if you have IT support, IT support lives in the general fund. If they're providing you support, you have to account for that cost. So this is part of our generally accepted accounting practices. And then next, we move on to budget recommendations. So I have a detailed slide on that. We'll walk through that with you here in a moment. And then we also have impact items. This is a $2.3 million increase. I do want to remind the Board, last year that was north of 16 million. So we've had, and we will show you the breakdown of those impact items and continue to update those each meeting. But this is anything that we do that the Board approves, whether it's a contract, it creates an obligation that there will, has to be an automatic, automatic budgetary increase on the next year. So all those will be listed on that breakdown. And again, we are... And again, we already touched on the four positions, two in fire, two in water. Any questions on this highlight slide before I move on? Okay, all right, so we touched, talked about the impact items. So this is the detailed list that we have. It totals the two point two, two point three million dollars so far this year. And we track these each and every board meeting. And as we walk down those, a lot of these are going to be contract based. Some of these are mandated. So we look at first responders for PTSD insurance, that is mandate. But again, that has to be approved by the board, and the impact item has to be accounted for. So we do make sure we keep up with those mandates or any other existing contracts that the board approves. Any questions on this list here? Good. Okay, very good. Okay, this is something that we share with the board, and we work very closely with the departments. Every month, we review every expense category, every revenue category that the county has. We work through our budget team. They do an excellent job of identifying shortages, trends, analysis. And they provide this backup to make sure that whatever we propose is not a one-off and that we see a history and trend and can provide you justification. Every item listed on this page, you'll notice that there are increases, but there are also decreases. So we do a thorough review of this to make sure if there is an opportunity for a decrease, we, we point that out, and we have that conversation with the department, as well as the board, and ultimately, it's the board's final decision. But just want to hit on a couple of those highlights. Or at the bottom right of that, you're going to see two very large decreases. One is designated contingency of one point five million dollars. This was established by the board via an agenda item for the All-Star game. We know we will not have major events each year, and this is something that came as a budget recommendation, although we know we will have FIFA next year. This is not something that we want as a part of our reoccurring budget. This is a one-time expense, which is ideally what reserves and fund balance are for. And this should not be part of the reoccurring budget. And then the undesigned contingency below that, we are reducing that. This was a decision that the board decided to do. Each of you received two hundred thousand dollars to fund costs within your district or within your office. That is being removed to help balance this budget. So again, taking a conservative approach of how do we balance this budget without negatively impacting fees and property taxes. One of the largest increases, though, that you will see is on the contribution line. That's one point four million dollars. A couple, last year, we approved our service delivery agreement with the six cities. And there was an increased cost to that. So that one point four million dollars is to make the, the increased budget that is required to make our annual payment to the six cities as a result of that service delivery contract. That does have an escalator each year, and we will continue to capture that in each, each budget as we move forward. Is there any questions on this page that I can, I can touch on for the board? Okay, very good. Okay, so this is a familiar slide. I think the board and the citizens have seen this pretty much every year. We like to give you a breakdown of the funds. So general fund has, does have a proposed increase of eighteen point three million dollars. That brings the general fund budget to six hundred and forty-three million. Now, I do want to hit some differences here. So we spend a lot of time talking about property taxes. On this slide, there are three funds that have a property tax component. It is the general fund, the fire fund, and the CSSD two, Cumberland Special Service District. Those are the millage rates that we're asking the board to consider for approval next Tuesday. Now, with that being said, those are very different funds, and let me tell you why. The general fund, property tax accounts for roughly sixty-one percent of the total revenues. So that means two hundred and forty-four million dollars that funds this six hundred and forty-three million comes from other revenue sources. So a part of our budget process each year is, again, reviewing every one of those revenue sources. That is anything from fines and forfeitures, to charge for services, to grants, to interest, you name it. Every one of those revenue sources is reviewed to make sure they're accurately budgeted and they, but they are conservatively budgeted. So that is our other side of that coin, is we want to make sure we're taking a conservative approach, and we do not create a, a net loss or a significant impact to cash position, as well as fund balance. So we do make sure we, we try to hit that mark the best we can as we move forward, but each and every one of those is thoroughly reviewed. That is very different than the fire fund. The fire fund has just basically one primary source of revenue, which is taxes. They do have a few other small fund, small revenues, but ninety-seven point eight percent of the fire fund is funded through property taxes. So it's a very different story than what the general fund is. And the same thing with the CSSD two. That is basically a property tax fund and any interest earnings that that generates. So those two funds are very different than the general fund. They're not as revenue diverse as, say, the general fund. But also, they are singular purpose. Fires to fund fire operations, personnel, and capital. Cumberland Special Service District two is to simply fund the debt service on the stadium bonds. Is there anything you'd like me to hit on this slide before I move on? Okay, all right. To round this out, this is the remaining of our governmental funds. You can see they have very few, very few changes here, but we do go through the same process with each and every one of these. So whether it's parking deck, law library, streetlight, district fund, same process exists, review every revenue source, analyze requests, present those to the board, and make any necessary changes based on that direction. So the total governmental funds account for thirty-three point eight, thirty-three point eight million dollars of the forty-eight million increase. All right, last but not least, are our, our business type funds. This is going to be water. We touched on this already. Water's primary driver is going to be our, due to operations, and that, again, was for water purchases, chemicals, and so on. It did have an inc, a small increase in personnel as a result of their roster update, as well as the proposed merit increase. So that's accounting for that. As we walk through the rest of these, most of these are pretty much flat from the prior year. But then you can see the very, the total at the bottom, again, forty-eight point four million dollars is the total proposed increase countywide. Okay, these are a little bit different animal here. So we talk about our operating budget, that's the forty-eight point four million dollars. These are what is considered our capital and grant budgets. These are multi-year, but we do adopt them each and every year based on the proposed budget and activity. As we walk through those, most of these are fairly flat. We do have some swings based on capital projects. So some capital projects can be pretty significant. These are capital projects that are not splosted. So I just want to be clear, and these are not splosted capital projects. They're either funded through water or through other means. The capital projects funds, for example, can be funded through general funds, for fire fund, depending on what those projects are for. That fund will move it over to that, the capital projects fund, so those projects can be completed. Because generally, the purpose of that is those projects take place over more than one year, which is why they land here. But the total to the multi-year and capital, sorry, the capital and grant funds is two point seven million dollar increase. And the big reason you see that is the multi-year capital grant fund is two point three. That is an estimate, and simply what we do is we establish that. And as grants are approved, we will move it out of this into the fund. If we do not use that amount, it does not be, it basically gets zeroed out at the end of the year. Any questions on this slide? Okay, very good. All right, and then we talked about budget schedule and millage schedule. These are identical, but I just can't reiterate this enough. Our last public hearing, as well as budget adoption, is next Tuesday, July twenty-second at seven PM. So I do want to make sure everybody's aware of that. And then last but not least, please visit Cobb County Finance page for any additional budget information, and kind of touched on some of those. So everything, the budget binders, the presentations, is all available for the public to consume there. And with that, I ask if you have any questions or if you'd like to open the public hearing.
Thank you. We'll open up the public hearing, and then we'll allow the board to, again, make any comments or ask any questions for the public hearing. A similar format for our prior one. An unlimited number of speakers can address the Board of Commissioners with respect to the budget and this matter only. We'll have up to three minutes to do so, and we'll take an unlimited number of speakers. Please feel free to approach as the next person is leaving. You don't have to wait to be called up to the mic. Thank you. And don't forget to please state your name before you begin your remarks.
Hello again, Jan Barton. And as I mentioned earlier, the budget and the millage are intertwined, so I might repeat a couple of things. I'm thought, I'm thinking of a movie with Paul Newman from several years ago as we've gone through this meeting. There was a line from it that said, "What we have here is a failure to communicate." And I'm, I'm listening to all of the comments about the homestead exemption, the senior exemption. What I want to focus on is process. What we have here is a failure to follow a good process. And I would like to suggest, for example, that when different departments bring up large expenditures in the middle of the year that were not on the budget, and y'all approve them, that is not good. That's called budget creep. And that's how we get to here, to this point. And so that takes into effect twenty-five and going forward in twenty-six. So I'm asking y'all to consider encouraging all department heads to think ahead, put it in the budget. If it's not in the budget, please don't approve any more of those. That includes Clyde Stell courses, Taj Mahal building remodels. And I'm not going to point out the departments, but you know to whom I'm referring. And I was very interested in reading County Manager McMorris's recent HAC article bragging about the benefits of the investment in the Braves' Truist Park Stadium. Instead, I'd like to ask that we ask the Braves to buy back our investment that we had no say-so in, and go along with what local economists are saying, which is the Braves are actually costing us fifteen million dollars a year. So that's not good business. And we mentioned this earlier, we'd like to focus on the basics. Fix our potholes, mow our grass, get out of the real estate and the golf club business, no more Taj Mahal buildings. And we'd like to ask our legislators to help us out with the home tax assessment approach, because it may be time to look at a flat tax, because it gives too many, too much wiggle room for shenanigans. I'm sorry, but it does. So again, stick to the basics of county government. Do not raise our taxes again, lower the millage, and change the current system. Thank you.
He is not speaking at our hearing, and we'll take our next citizen speaker.
Christine Rosman. Okay, so I was thinking, we're talking about budget. Hey, how much did that Home Roll Maps cost us? Was that in the budget? Because that was a debacle. And when you're spending a million or so dollars on little debacles like that, they end up adding up. We're all heard about what happened in Ostel. Their tax rate's gone up a hundred and fifty-eight percent. It's like, is Cobb County imploding? It's pretty bad. So on this budget, who is actually, is actually building the budget? Like, who's, who's deciding which bucket of money is going where? And how much is, is that going? Is it, are you getting influenced by the Atlanta Regional Commission? Because I know that they have a, quite a bit of influence. I keep thinking about what Karen had to say and how much her mortgage has gone up. And she's just one person that you're hearing from, okay? There are so many people that this is affecting. And, you know, if the mortgage company, if you don't pay the entire amount, and you don't know that if you have it on auto pay, that it went up, then they could come in and like, oh, we're going to take your house away. And then, oh, look, here comes Black Rock, ready to scoop up those houses. And what Jan Barton had to say, too, about the Braves stadium, I mean, we didn't have, I remember that. I remember when Tim Lee came in and said, oh, the Braves are coming to Cobb County. Nothing was vetted, nobody had any, any say-so. I remember all these people were in the middle rows. I can't remember where that event was. We're all in the middle rows, we're like, go Braves, we want the Braves. They got there before any of the citizens that didn't want it. It was so misrepresented. You know, when you have, like, pathetic kind of decisions that are being made on behalf of the citizens, this is why we're angry. There aren't a lot of people here, obviously, tonight, because you know what? They're so sick and tired of coming here. And then, so you know what? Shame on us if we don't come and hold you accountable. Because it's our county, it is not yours. I mean, you can live here, and that's fine. So, anyway, the, and then how much on those homestead exemptions? How many people aren't getting homestead exemptions? What percentage of the budget is that? And what if these people wise up and do their?
Ms. Rosman, your time's up.
We'll take our next speaker.
I'm Ross R. Sutherland, live just off the square here in Marietta. And just something that came to my mind recently, which I guess is a good problem to have, you know, the square's getting busier and busier with all these restaurants, and everybody's having to pay to park. But I was wondering, you know, I remember back, you know, twenty eighteen when Chairman Boyce unceremoniously had to raise the millage rate, like we were just discussing. And a lot of it had to do with these parking decks here. And so I was just kind of wondering where we stood on that in terms of the budget, you know? I mean, it would be nice if we could go back to, you know, free parking after five and on the weekends, but I hadn't heard that talked about much lately. So if that's something, you know, that could be discussed, or we can get an update on that, you know, I think that'd be, be pretty interesting to, to hear. And, you know, of course, you know, I can walk up here, so I don't park up here a lot, but I have heard stories of people, like, you know, they put their card in the machine to get out of the deck, and they can't get out, and our fire department has to come let them out, or, or the company has to let them out, so they're not paying anyway. So, but yeah, if we could just get some, maybe get a little more information on that, I'd be interested to see that. Thank you.
We'll take our next speaker. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And I'll ask Bill if you can approach. And again, we'll go down the dais. I'll begin with Commissioner Gambrell to see if she has any comments or questions with respect to the presentation or any of the speakers' comments here tonight.
First, I'd like to share an email that came in from one of my constituents who's walking, watching online. And in regards to the conversation that was just had, he states, "Miss Cupid fails to understand that there must be choices made in the spending. You can't have everything." And I guess that's kind of what's being echoed here tonight by many of the speakers that did come in person. Where I'm having a problem with this budget, and I think this echoes a lot of the constituents' concerns as well, is we do have some exorbitant spending going on. Maybe not by the Board of Commissioners, maybe not by the departments that are controlled under the Board of Commissioners, but to the public, there is exorbitant spending going on. And to sit here and say that we have no control over that, we are not being fair to the public, because we do have control over it. Because again, if, if these offices can find money to do these additional things, then they don't need the money to run their office. And how many times are we seeing that things are not getting done, that need to get done, that then affect other departments and make them more ineffective? And if you would like me to put specific departments to my examples, I'd be more than glad to do that, but I'm trying to keep my comments general. So, yes, I can understand why folks think we are overspending. And again, one of the speakers brought up, you know, prime rib. Again, I wasn't part of that decision-making. I don't know why that was done. But again, that's an image that is getting put out that we don't care about how taxpayer dollars are spent. So to that, I do think this board can do a better job in budgeting. You know, yes, I agree, our employees need to be compensated. I understand public safety needs, their equipment and such. I have no problem with funding that. Where I do have a problem with this budget is we know there's other issues out there, and we are not addressing them. You know, it's that proverbial, oh, let's just kick the can down the road. You know, it's that proverbial, oh, let's just kick the can down the road and we'll get to it sometime. Well, I think, again, with all the increases that have been happening, our constituents want us to stop kicking that can. They really want us to sit down and say, hey, is this needed? Is this being extravagant? Are we, are we functioning outside of what the role that this office was created for? Because I will say, we've got many offices that have almost turned into self-campaigning departments. Government is not to be about self-campaigning. It's about serving the people. So I hear you, I understand, and I do think we can do a better job at that. I know, Bill, we've had some very courageous conversations. And one of my favorite questions to Bill is, whose budget is this? Because I really don't know. Because I understand the needs of the county manager. I hear the different department needs. But I really don't know whose budget this is. Because as you said, in the reports that I was looking at where it's adopted in actuals, it's apples and oranges. Well, it might be apples and oranges, but then if you go down to the reports that say what the board approved for spending outside of the budget, it still doesn't equate for that difference. So the bottom line is people that are looking at our budget, maybe they don't know, yes, we approved this here or that there, which in this year totaled, what, 2.1 million, I think it was? That doesn't equate for some of those budgets that are $32 million over what was adopted. And until we start having those conversations, I think we're going to continue to have the public comments that we have today. And I'm not expecting a response from you, Bill.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Allen, Commissioner Burrell.
So, Bill?
Yes, ma'am.
To the 3.39 increase is equivalent, I mean percent, is equivalent to dollars, millions, dollar amount?
Sure. So, let's see, I'll do some quick math for you, so I'm sure we're good here. So one of the things I'm going to start with, and the reason why I'm going to do some math for you, is that if you look at the general fund, we have a category that says property taxes. That went up $14 million from 2025 to 26. Now, I want to caveat that because there is some math I need to do with that. With included in that category is title ad valorem tax, which is not a part of the property tax or millage base. So I just want to make sure I take that out of that calculation for you.
Bill, can I interject? I know you're, you're-
Commissioner, the protocol is that you asked it, I know, but-
I know, I was raising my hand and nobody was acknowledging me.
You can just say Chairwoman Cupid, because what I don't want to do is have commissioners weighing in when another commissioner has the floor to do that. And then it just gets spirally, which we've talked about in the past, which is why we have a protocol for addressing things. So, please let Bill respond and then please let me know how you weigh in, just so we can keep a semblance of order.
Budgetarily, we're looking at an increase based on millage collection and property taxes. That's going to be about $8 million for the general fund. From '25 adopted to '26 proposed. So if, if, if you do, as a commissioner or a citizen, look at that, you'll see the general fund will have a property tax line that says 13.9 million dollar increase. You need to back out 5.9 million of that as TAVT. Okay? So just want to be clear. Because I, that, that is confusing. You see property taxes, but within that category is title ad valorem taxes, which is not generated based on millage. So that does have to come out.
Okay.
Okay.
And then this, when we first got the proposed budget, there was a $7 million of healthcare, pension, different costs associated with what we were already in the hole, so to speak.
So yes, Budget Binder One started off with a $7 million deficit within the general fund. And as a part of Budget Binder One, we gave a proposed some options to start the conversation of how do we balance that $7 million? Budget Binder Two has the reconciliation from that $7 million budget to structurally balanced. A big chunk of that was, as we work through this process, we always, because we present you the requests, we have to estimate increases in healthcare costs, which county-wide, that's pretty significant. So those came in better than, better than initially projected. Working through Blue Cross, Blue Cross, sorry, Blue Cross Blue Shield and Kaiser, those came in a little bit better. And that was able to shave about $4 million off that, if I'm not mistaken. And then we worked through some other items, like removing the BOC contingency and a few other items to chip away. So when we talk about this budget not containing a lot of new items, it simply doesn't. That budget highlight sheet really hits on what is driving that. And those are going to be things like contracts, water purchases, impact items, as well as budget recommendations. So again, this isn't going to be the full-blown budget. And the reason it's not is the second year of the biennial. And typically during that process, we don't look really at any major changes. So we have those requests as a point of record for the board, because those will be used as planning tools as we move into 2027. The first year of that biennial budget process is generally the big lift. And because the digest only grew at 3.3%, that really limited the ability to consider much. So like I said, we started at $7 million deficit based on that projection alone and had to work through that process. So that is part of our process each and every year, is we'll walk. And I think I told each and one, each and every one of you when we met the first time, I know we're at $7 million deficit, we're early, we have some stuff we still have to review, these are not final numbers, this is not a cause for panic. So we will work through the process, and that's exactly what we did. But it does come back to the board having to make some decisions. And part of that, one of those decisions was removing the $200,000 that you each receive. That was a part of the concession to get us structurally balanced. So thank you for obviously working through all those decisions as we go through that process with you each and every year.
Okay, and just one more thing. I'd like to have one more meeting before Tuesday.
Absolutely.
We can sit up here and say, we don't like this, we don't agree with it, but we need to come up with solutions or at least recommendations of what we could live with or what we, what we see, just what we could do.
Yes, and Commissioner, that is definitely part of the process. So when we meet with each and every one of you, we walk through what's in there, what you like, what you dislike. We have conversations to make sure we try to build a consensus the best we can. Ideally, I would love a 5-0 vote. I mean, that's always my goal. With, I think that's a goal with any agenda item. I mean, it's always the goal. So that's why we meet with each and every one of you, is to make sure that if we can and we can build a consensus, even if it's change this by a dollar, if I get five that want to do it, I'm absolutely amenable to doing that. So that's part of that process. So this budget does reflect each and every one of those meetings. Now, I can promise you, there's something that each of you have asked for that is not in this budget. Because every one of you up there had to make some sacrifices to get this balanced. So, but I, hopefully, I can look at each one of you and say, there's something in here that you did ask for that we were able to include. So I know that was one of the priorities and one of the biggest priorities I heard from the board. And I don't know biggest, but one of the priorities that we absolutely were able to include was the water, water reduction transfer. So that was something resoundingly, and we put it on our sheet, said, hey, we can balance if you don't want to touch this and leave it alone. And we met with each of you and that same answer was, nope, we're absolutely reducing that. So that gave us direction and we, we included that in there. So that's, that's definitely what those meetings are. But Commissioner, I'm happy to meet with you between now and Tuesday and we can, I'll take any direction in chat.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. I appreciate your comments. We don't approve the budget overnight. This takes months of us looking at numbers and determining how we'll make things move forward. And again, a lot of consideration was given towards an anticipated shortfall, and we had to make difficult decisions, which are resulting in a number of things not moving forward with this budget. But I want to assure the public that despite what comments are made here on the dais, that each commissioner has the opportunity to work with this board to see how we can get to a point where we are all working together to keep this county running within a budget that we can approve. And what we have here today is based on consensus. I too think that in the ice deal scenario, sometimes 5-0 looks good, but sometimes that's not ideal. Because we know that there is diversity of thought. And then if you always had things that were 5-0, then you would be wondering if there is collusion and if there was any difference in how people were elected here on this board. So while on its face, it may look good, we recognize and respect the fact and make room for diversity of thought, which is why we are able to vote on consensus and not necessarily needing everything to require the full support of this board. What I do know is that whether or not commissioners support the budget or not, every commissioner benefits from the budget. So we've had commissioners not vote for the budget, but I assure you, they and their district benefit by the budget that is passed. So it, while we can discuss what may be ideal, at the end of the day, this county needs to run and we have plenty of opportunity to come together to figure out how we can make that happen. I too, like Commissioner Gamble, want to address issues as they arise. None of us want to kick cans down the road, which is why we don't make short-run decisions like decreasing the budget and then not address things that we know we have to address in perpetuity. We look at things holistically. We know that there are plenty of issues that we have to address. I told my team after a wonderful All-Star game, I said, we had an All-Star effort. When it came to the big game, we need to make sure we have All-Star effort when it comes to addressing the needs of this county. And that is our desire, that's where my heart is. So Commissioner Gamble, I share that same sentiment. There are things in this county we need to address. And I definitely look forward to doing that with this board. And I think all of us are amenable to seeing how we could do that best. There was, yes, I just want to finish this and then-
Well, I, I didn't know if you were going to have to respond to what-
Like I said, every commissioner had an opportunity and then we can all weigh in. Because I don't want to not give every commissioner the same courtesy that another was given. So you, she had the courtesy to provide her remarks and her comments and her questions uninterrupted. Everyone on this board will have the opportunity to provide their comments and their questions uninterrupted. Then we will make opportunity for everyone to be able to discuss the matter. I just think that's the fairest way for everybody to feel as if they've had the opportunity to be heard. I want to go to some of the remarks that were shared by citizens and forgive me as it may take some time for me to do that. As I go through these notes here. Okay, I want to go back to our initial speaker with respect to the second hearing and how we may make decisions during the year that may creep outside of the budget. And there is interest in adhering to the budget, but things do happen in real time. I mean, as much as we look to what's documented, things come up in this county like things may come up in your individual households that require our attention. But the board still has discretion. We don't automatically need to address those things, which is why we see those things come back before the board in an agenda item. Those things are referred to as impact items. I remember, I think last year, those impact items that crept outside of the budget totaled, I think, 16?
16.
$16 million. This year, those budget impact items now totaled $2.274 million. So we have limited the amount of expenditure outside of the budget, but that doesn't mean next year or any other year, things may not come up in real time that need to be addressed. What I can assure you, when that happens, each commissioner has their eyes on that. And what you do not see, even though some of us are being pointed out, is that some of those votes to address those impact items are made with full support of the board. Because we are looking at what is going on at that time that we need to respond to that requires our attention. But we also do encourage, particularly when it comes to creation of positions, we do encourage that to occur in the budget process so that we can have some steady way of keeping our budget close to what we had projected. Or expenditures close to what we anticipated our budget to be. Do I have my glasses today? And I'm trying to read my own handwriting. I don't know if it's that. The Braves have been a subject that has come up time and time again, and it's come up in remarks here today. I can tell you that we are at a point where I believe there's no continuing general fund expenditure to cover our, our monthly debt requirement, to cover the bonds. And so we are grateful for the continued growth that happens with that investment. I think there will continue to be differences of opinion of whether or not that was worth the investment that was made. But what we do know is that investment is here and that investment continues to have increased property tax dollars returned to the county and increased energy that has resulted in us having great events like the one that we celebrated over the past week. But we've also seen other developments come to the county. Other businesses want to be here because of that investment. And we reap those property tax dollars and those sales tax dollars from that. I certainly had a difference of opinion when that deal was being made and I shared a sentiment of how we were budgeting at that time. But I also look to where we are today and our goal is to make sure that we are minimizing the impact to our taxpayers with respect to that investment. And what we've seen, I think, is a return to this county beyond what many of us have projected it to be. And it is our goal, if we ever do anything like that again, that we will keep in mind public sentiment and keep you better informed and engaged in how that moves forward. There was a comment about the golf business that we're in, and I remember asking you about-
I love that question.
Okay, so if you can address that.
Because it is very, when you see that, you do, it's like, why is the county in the golf course business? I mean, it, it, it's a fair question, but it is a question that we get frequently. So at the end of the day, the reason we have that is, you know, a couple of years ago when we were in budget situation, it was tight, it was asked, sell the golf course. Well, one, we don't own it. It is the Corps of Engineers property, we have a lease to have a golf course there. And in addition to that, it is a money generator. So last year alone, in 2024, the Cobblestone Golf Course and made over $400,000. So again, those monies are county-generated dollars. They are returned and hopefully in, you know, to keep the course up. But again, taxes don't go to the Cobblestone or the county's golf course. It is simply user fee-based. And it is, I will say, since COVID, is probably the, one of the best performing golf courses in the area. I mean, I think people were working remotely and playing golf all at the same time, but ever since then, it's been fantastic. We did, always the goal for Cobblestone was to break even. Since then, it has been a significant revenue generator for the course. And again, those funds are housed within a separate fund, not co-mingled with any property taxes or the general fund. But again, we cannot sell that because we do not own it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
There was a question with expenditure with respect to the Home Roll Maps that we have discussed at great length. Yes, there were attorney fees paid with respect to that dispute. There are attorney fees paid with respect to disputes that the county incurs. I'm not aware of any specific agenda item and attorney role, and you can let me know if we've had expenditure outside of our budget with respect to that matter.
No, we did not.
Okay, thank you. With, I can't read my handwriting again. There was a question about what percent of our budget is comprised of those that do not have a homestead exemption? I don't know the revenue that we get from-
We could work with the Tax Commissioner's Office to break that.
Non-homestead residential, yeah.
Yeah, because what we do, and Mr. Testor shared this, is you get that, basically the tax consolidation sheet, which does break down residential, commercial, public utilities, and then you get the exemption line. We could work with the Tax Commissioner's Office to see if we can get a breakdown of the number of residential homes versus those that have the homestead exemption. But again, some of those could be residential, classified residential and be rented. So that would also disqualify them. So not, that's not, probably not a fair answer because you, it can only be for your primary residence and if you own more than one residential property, only, you can only apply for one.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. But we could, we'll definitely work to provide that information to the board.
Thank you. And I do want to go back also with respect to the Home Roll Map. There were expenditures made with respect to attorney's fees that were within budget. There are some questions if not having a special election would have taken- There are some questions if not having a special election would have taken us out of our budget. But the redrawing of maps would have resulted in us having to have a unique election to address that. That did not necessarily correspond with our existing election cycle. I do want to get to your comments with respect to the parking deck. I wish we would have tooted our own horn a little bit better with respect to that, but can you address that? And then we could talk about why we do have expenditures still associated with.
Absolutely. And I do want to be clear that we did not, the millage rate increase was not related to the parking deck. So that was, that was one of the things that we did address. But because the general fund was performing well as a part of our stewardship of that, the board elected to pay off the bonds associated with those parking decks. So that was, again, when there is dollars in excess of projections or we are generating a net income, we take those and reinvest those to make further savings in the future. So one of the things that you'll note is Cobb County has extremely low debt. We have no GO debt and we paid off our.
What's the GO debt?
Sorry, general obligation. County manager got me on that earlier. Thank you. No general obligation debt. So the last one that we paid was the, the park spots. So, and if you remember, we had a millage associated with that and it was decided at that point, we were going to shift the point one three mills to fire. So that is again, bringing us back to the fire conversation, but the parking deck is performing very well. No bond, no, no debt associated with the deck whatsoever. It is simply there, the revenue is housed within its own fund and is designed to cover any capital maintenance to the deck that is required as well as any operations.
Yeah, thank you. And it may reiterate the point you just made, that what we do collect for the parking deck goes towards ongoing annual maintenance. So we do have to cover that cost or else we would have to push that to the general fund. So it's somewhat commensurate with the cost of having users in the deck.
And Chairwoman, that is something that we do review each year, just like any other fund. We evaluate where their reserves are to make sure we have appropriate capital reserves and cash balances to address those needs. If there was ever a fee adjustment needed, it would be something that we bring to the county manager and the board as a recommendation. But at this point, we are wanting to make sure that we do have the appropriate level of capital reserves and cash on hand to address those ongoing capital maintenance issues. One deck is significantly older than the others, so we want to make sure we can maintain that properly.
Okay. Going back to some prior comments, looking at our budget wants versus needs, we have gone through this analysis when our former chairman was here. It was a very painful analysis. And what we found is that every dollar has a constituency. So while some people may perceive some things are just wants or needs, there are some people who perceive their wants are needs and there's some things that we did not know we had to do as a county, which may not necessarily be perceived as something that we need to be doing. But a result of eventually looking at that resulted in us actually increasing our budget when we found out what the needs and interests were of the county and our ability to sustain the level of service that our citizens expect. Cutting, and maybe that gets to a deeper, more philosophical thing, that cutting, when you are a lean organization, results in service level impact. So if you are interested in perhaps less services where people may perceive they need them or diminished service levels, then we could look at making those decreases. But what we have not found is that there is a decrease in the expectation of this county over time. As we grow and as needs diversify and, and change and grow, there continues to be a desired level of service that people expect from Cobb County that results in us trying to do the very best we can. And I talk about this a lot and I'm glad that we are addressing our employees. But I used to go back to a nursery or a nursery book that I used to have about Rumpel's Skilt Skin and making gold with straw. We keep trying to eke the most with the same, you know, with very limited amount of resources, but we are expecting top level tier service, top level tier performance from a leading county. And that gets old for some time. So I'm very grateful that we are doing things that we did not do when I first started, which was having merit increases for our staff regularly. Something that we're doing this year is looking at a COLA because our staff should be paid in a way that is competitive. And our COLA will not get us there, but it's also smart for us to do it. It allows us to try to keep our wages of our employees on track. But it also keeps us from having this balloon expenditure when every five years, we look at how we try to, how we try to have employees paid what they, what the market is sharing that they're worth. And as was shared, our last paying class studies showed that we needed $30 million. We could only cobble up $20 million. So that means we were behind even when we did that five-year study. So the service level that you are getting that allowed us to do what we did over this past week, that allows you to get the responsiveness that you have, that allows Cobb County to remain the leader as it has been, has been with people that pay more towards serving you than what we pay them in being the, the most well-paid or handsomely paid employee here. They are serving with their hearts, is what I'm trying to tell you. Trying to tell you, I believe our citizens get more than what we may understand that we contribute. And you may not necessarily agree with this budget, but I would ask for you to look at the level of service of our surrounding jurisdictions and ask us and show us who is doing it better. Because if they are, we want to learn. We want to learn how to do it better. Show us, give us an example because I can assure you, we want to do what's right for our citizens. But show us who is doing what Cobb County is in leading with the stellar service and investment that we have here for any less than how we're doing it. There are other things we need to work on as Commissioner Gamble observed. We had a speaker observe, we need to do things for powering our grid, for AI, making sure that we have the resources. I took a note of that. I think that's something, should be mindful as we all are using technology more. There was a comment made that our budget growth is unprecedented. Is that the case?
So as we walk through that, that was one of the things I did want to just go ahead and share because we did not include it on the slide. So for example, the budget increase, we talked about 48 million, and I know 48 million is a big number, but that is 3.8% growth. So when we talk about the digest growth of 3.3, and again, it's only 61% of the general fund is funded through digest, that is kind of on par with what we're doing digest-wise. So as, as you all know, when we got up here in March and presented the requests and in the budget book, there is a detailed line of every department request and it walks through every single one, any justifications they put in. Most of those are not funded in this. It is simply, we are doing the, what is the top priority and doing the requirements of this. So when we're talking significant budget growth, I will say, we've had significant budget growth in the previous, in a few years because you saw the revenue and the economy grow. So when we talk about what is the budget growing in comparison to inflation, that is something to keep in mind. Cause when we say it grew 3%, that's great. What was inflation? Because as every homeowner, including myself, if you go to the store, I know I'm paying more today than I was a year ago. And that is no different for the county. For every staple, stapler you buy, every piece of paper, every road you pave costs you more today than it did yesterday. To just say that that budget will be flat is unrealistic.
Thank you. Bear with me, I'm almost done. Okay, I believe that covers my notes. If there's any other comments from commissioners, I will start with Commissioner Gamble and we'll go right back down the dais again.
Bill, I had some questions and this kind of was tagging on to what Commissioner Broll was saying. Is while we're saying that the, the tax base increased by 14 million and then we had to deduct out the 7 million for the TAVT. Was that increase due to reassessments or was that due to new homes coming into the mix? And just for my fellow commissioners, the reason why I'm bringing this up is because that is important. And while we're saying we only had a $44 million increase, the one development we approved yesterday was a $55 million development, which is only going to generate about $650,000 for the county, but it will not generate anything for the school district because it's restricted to ours, it was restricted to seniors. So, so this is how, I think, again, going back to the, the school board, this is how, again, we impact them as well. And again, so with that one development that we did yesterday, that is 55 million, which is essentially the growth we had today. But we never do really report that the increase is based on additional housing or, or business or if it's because we're reassessing homes.
So that is actually part of the Tax Assessor's digest projection when they walk through that. They go through new stock added versus reassessed or change in value. So we can work with you and make sure you have a copy of that presentation. Cause they, that is one of the areas that they want to focus on is, are we adding housing stock to our current market? Or is this simply revaluation? And some of those could be, you have a benefit and you have a tax abatement and 10, you know, 10% per year and those add in as they go through the cycle. So there's a variety of different reasons in which those can change. But I will say, in the previous years, a lot of that was driven by reassessment, change in fair market value. This year, you're looking at a much smaller growth. So I don't want to say all of that is driven by reassessment because we know we had, we're talking to the Tax Assessor's office, there were some properties that had a decrease in value. So we can get you that presentation that they did. They do an excellent job with that of kind of breaking that out because that is always a very good question for us as well. Is it important to know, are we adding to the stock of properties that is available to our citizens? Or is this simply being driven by reassessments? And I will, like I said, I'll reiterate, previous years, a lot of it was reassessments just because the price of property was going through the roof so quickly for a period of time. This year, you're seeing that slow and we're projecting that based on working with the Tax Assessor. And our economist said that that is going to be closer to the new normal. You're not going to see large spikes that we saw. You're not going to see digest growth of eight, nine percent that we saw. We're looking something more between three, 2%, maybe even as low as one. So we're taking those into account as we move forward. So that is part of our long-term plan. So I know we talk about one budget cycle, but we always do a five-year plan of what that looks like and try to play with those numbers to make sure we're making conservative decisions for the long run. Cause the last thing we want to do is put you in a situation where you have an unbudgeted situation. But again, some of those could come based on an unforeseen need or circumstance that arises outside of that process.
So I'm glad you're going to give it to us, but is it available to the public?
Sure, yeah, it is something.
Where can they find it?
So one of the things, we can make it available, put it on the site. Cause one of the things we do as a part of our ratings presentation each year is we work through that with them, a five-year projection. Now again, after year two, those are just simply educated guesses as we walk through it. But we make sure those are conservative, educated guesses. And where those swings can happen is if we make large decisions. So like, for example, when we did this a couple of years ago, we did not necessarily anticipate a major step in grade change, which had an impact. So when we do that, we refresh the data and then we prepare a new projection. So that is always something that we like to do. And then think part of that consideration is going to be, did the digest perform as expected? Did it exceed expectations and vice versa, or did it underperform? So all of those come into play and there's, every year, there's going to be a constant update as we walk through those. Cause we could have an agenda item on Tuesday that significantly changes that projection. So yes, we can definitely make it available and put it on the website. But the, the thing I want to caution everybody is that is a snapshot in time. And as soon as that snapshot is taken, there's new data and new information available. So unless you always look at the, the latest and greatest update and projection, those are very fluid because anything could happen. Any board meeting can change it, any change in the economy, tariffs, you name it. All those could come into play and we always have to make sure we're adjusting for those. Now, good news is, general fund doesn't have a lot of capital, so tariffs don't have a big impact on some of our, because we don't have a big construction on that side, but they do impact the goods and services that we receive and provide each and every day. So there is an impact.
And then just real briefly, just for the viewers, the TAVT tax. We know that's not a steady income, that, that can fluctuate. And then it was several years ago that the legislatures changed the structure of how TATV was distributed. So our, I guess Jimmy's not here, but we're not seeing or having any indicators that the legislators are going to be changing that. And again, knowing that it's a, a fluctuating number anyways.
Yeah, it, we, we definitely went through a unique process. And we've gone through the birthday tax, which is typically paid through, you know, every year, when you did your tax renewal, you had to pay it versus, you know, when you make your purchase, you, you pay the, the TAVT tax. And it's, it was very different and a learning experience. And I know we worked very closely with ACCG and we knew that was very fluid. And that was one of their pieces of advice of like, hey, be careful with this because it's here today. Doesn't mean it's here tomorrow. So we have seen a very stable period of that for the last several years. And, and it is something that we definitely want to pay attention to is if, working with our delegation, is, is there any discussions about change? But we do that with every major revenue source that we have because they all could have a significant impact. So, you know, when we talk about those mandates or anything like that on the expenditure side, the revenue side is equally as important.
And so as of this meeting, you have.
I have not heard any proposed changes.
Okay.
Sorry.
I haven't either, but I just, again, for the public's information, because again, we talk about unfunded mandates and such. Just to help.
Yeah, we, we stay plugged in with Engageify. So anything that is related to any department in the county, Mr. Giese, our deputy county manager, shares that with us. We provide comments that helps us with our delegation. They, and he, he works very closely with them to make sure that if we see something that is, you know, negatively impacting us or something that, hey, we're really in favor of this, we're supportive of, that is, all that information is ideally shared. So, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamble. Commissioner Allen?
Thank you for the, the presentation. I'll be really brief, but I do want to make the same request that Commissioner Burrell made to have one more conversation. I know.
Absolutely.
About two months ago, when I was sworn in, the first meeting I had was with you and your team on the budget. And I thank you guys for that because coming from the legislature, the process is, is very different.
Yeah.
It's not better, it's not worse, it's just different. One of the things I will say to everyone listening, everyone in the audience, now being on, on the side of both, the experience that we're having tonight is the way it should be. And it's something that's missing from the legislature. So I, I appreciate all of you that came in to speak because out of all the budget years that I sat through in that process, there is no such thing as public comment under the gold dome when it comes to how your tax dollars are spent. So this is a real privilege. And so I appreciate everyone that came in to speak today. And, and one of the things that I learned in that process is that the budget is not a financial document as much as it is a document of your priorities.
Yeah.
And I agree with almost every speaker and comments that there are some improvements that can be made so that our budget truly does speak to and reflect the priorities of the county. And some of that comes with transparency and clarity. I, I am learning from emails, from constituents, from comments. There's a lot of clarity we need to provide on where funds are coming from for certain projects.
Sure.
There are a lot of things that people spoke about tonight from the dais and from the audience that are capital projects, they're part of SPOST, not even reflected in this budget.
Absolutely.
That needs clarity so people understand what those differences are. You know, we talk about potholes and roads and things that just show up on an agenda. Those are out of SPOST. They are things that are being impacted and done today, but how they're funded is materially different than what we're looking at in this document. So I encourage everyone to continue to have those conversations. But if anyone is in my district, or even if you're not, if you'd like to have a conversation and learn along with me to get that clarity, because I think that's a piece that's missing as well. And if we did give more transparency, more information, and I'm, I'm new to the process, but I do have the curiosity to continue to challenge you and your team to figure out ways to do that. So that people do have clarity when they see that something is being done and the large amounts of money that we spend on agenda items that we sometimes can see as unexpected, we should take a pause, slow down and provide our constituents that clarity. And I hope that we can continue to work and do that. And I, but I do, do have one question out of all that. Going back to the question Commissioner Burrell asked about, how did we close that $7 million gap? One of the things that you didn't talk about was the positions that were requested. This budget does not grow our government resources at all.
By four positions, countywide, four positions, two for fire, two for water. Yeah, the 290 that were.
But they are not, and those, even those four, we're growing our government by four positions.
Four positions.
And none of that is coming from the general fund.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Burrell. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Gammel.
Just as a follow-up, because I know you're a new Commissioner Allen, but as Bill said, we're in the middle of a biannual budget, so typically, we don't add new positions in the middle of a biannual budget.
It's, it's very limited, I will say this. I won't say we don't typically add, but it is very limited.
Okay, just, I didn't know if you knew that.
Yeah, no, but the first, the first. Budget that I looked at had over 100 positions requested, I believe. And that went from 100 to zero, and I think that deserves some acknowledgement as well, because that's not an easy thing to do and go back and tell department heads, you're going from your request to zero, whether it's uncommon or not. I think that was a good move.
And I do want to piggyback on Commissioner Allen's comments. So that is something that we challenge the board on each and every year. So our goal is always, how can we improve the process? How can we be more transparent? So part of the things that we've done in the last couple of years is we start to establish the budget binder. So we definitely want that feedback, because we want you to have the information you need to make the decision. Because ultimately, we can make a recommendation, but ultimately, you all have to make that decision. So we, if you don't feel like you have the information, that is doing you a disservice. So we want to make sure, I do challenge you, if you feel like there's something that we could tweak, whether it's for you personally, as a commissioner, or the chair, or the public, that's what we want to do. So we, you, you'll see, and I think, you know, Chairwoman Cupid, Commissioner Brol, and Commissioner Gammel, the budget process evolves each year, and it should. It shouldn't be a stagnant process. It is your priorities, it is your planning tool. So how do we communicate that better? And how do we get you the information to make sure you're making the adequate decision that you need and feel comfortable?
You're, you're spot on, and I think, you know, as a new commissioner, you can help us see things with a new set of eyes. The budget is a lot to absorb, and we acknowledge that. This is not an insignificant amount of money, nor an insignificant amount of expenditures. And every year, I do want to commend our finance team. They find ways to build transparency into this process, and we've had meetings outside of here. We'll have another meeting tomorrow night. It's, it's a lot, and we want our citizens to, we want our citizens to be as well-informed as possible. So we encourage any ideas that you may have. We continue to be responsive. We did, I think, we had an efficiency and effective governance meeting here. We had about 70, 60, 70 residents. We walked through the budget, we walked through different links on the finance website that they could go to for additional details. So sometimes it's so much information, it could be overwhelming, because they are doing their best to be transparent. But certainly, I think we want to be amenable for ways that we can do that, not just in the budget process, but throughout the year. With that, thank you, everyone who's been here tonight. Thank you, commissioners, for your engagement. Thank you to all of our citizens who were here, took time to not only be present, but who took time to also address the board. We do have one more night of hearings before the board. It will be our night that we will make the decision on both our millage and on our budget. That will be next week, Tuesday evening at 7:00 PM during our regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting. Citizens will have the same opportunity they had here tonight to address their commissioners once again, but you don't have to wait until then. We've been receiving some emails that we've been responding to along the way, and again, there will be a virtual town hall meeting tomorrow, where we can hopefully have a bit of better free-flowing conversation where it's not so one-sided. But again, thank you for your participation tonight, and our meeting is now adjourned.